All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting order please. Turn off all cell phone electronic devices to offer to vibrate at this time. And Miss Doherty and Kelly, would you please...
Good day, Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask, Lord, that you will send us the more rain. We know, Lord, that you're going to bless our town, God, with rain, fill our lakes. We ask, Lord, that you will guide and direct us, Lord, as we take on the business of this town and the decisions that need to be made. In your blessed name, amen.
(Inaudible)
He, uh, he informed me that two and a half people today, yes, on the meeting. They can get out of.
Thank you, Miss Doherty. Appreciate you. All right, we've settled through with the minutes of the September eighth and September fourteenth, two thousand fifteen meetings. So we're going to review.
I make a motion that we approve both September the eighth and September the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen meetings, with noted corrections to the September eighth, two thousand fifteen meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on each subject at this time. I do not see anyone that's not on the agenda. All right, let's just take action on the request, probably Mr. Sam, this vehicle for support of long store market evening. It says long store market, I thought it was, uh...
Yeah, yeah, is it still long store?
Okay.
Just ten days, but it's come together. And the reason why I use hunt together, it's something that Gail wanted to call it, and I did whatever she said. Do we have a hunt together?
I didn't want to see you turn around.
We need the camera.
We don't worry about getting comfortable.
I don't have that at all. Anyway, this is same old, kinda same criteria that I gave you guys last time. It's very similar. And, uh... It's just a bunch of stuff. And I'm getting on the line and I tried to find this last quarter, but I couldn't find it, uh, the second quarter of this year. And I couldn't find it because the state is very slow in reporting their stuff. Yeah, myself, thanks for having me. And more than I know, you're dying to get coffee. So what's for us? Oh, Steve. And this is very similar to the information I had that last time. I have no good information, the state didn't have it in the second quarter this year. So I don't know what it did over there, as far as it helped. I will tell you this. We had a bunch of vendors over there that said that's the best show and most sales they've ever had. And they've even been to the Petticoats, and they said they had better sales at this last spring than they did at Petticoats. Uh, that says a lot. Also, had several businesses in town, over and over and over again, said that weekend was the best weekend they'd had, you know, ages. And one of them told me that, uh, that would carry them through until the next weekend. So, as far as sales, it just, it helped them get through that kinda slow period, and it's gonna, uh, be helpful. That's all I'm gonna say. I'm not gonna take credit for that, 'cause we got lots of people working on that. We got a lady from New Mexico that does all the Facebook. She's half implement, Laura Wills. She does all the Facebook information, and she does a tremendous amount of work, and she split whatever we get fifty-fifty. We did, uh, I told y'all, we did about sixty-five hundred dollars in advertisement. We actually, we did about seventy-five, maybe, I don't know, sixty-five hundred for a year. We had enough sponsors, and, and very appreciative of what the city did. That helped tremendously. Uh, could help us. We did about eighteen thousand mailouts, nine thousand in Adelaide, nine thousand in San Antonio. Y'all already know all that stuff. This first page that you guys have, I think it's the Hotel Motel, is that the second quarter? Is that what y'all got? You can see, what's interesting about this, and we just went to Frederickburg yesterday. We had to go down there and meet some friends of ours from Gonzales. And I had to take a friend of mine, a dear one, and, but anyway, Frederickburg, it just blows my mind. Yesterday, you couldn't find a place to park, nowhere to park. And I just, I just, you look over there at Frederickburg sales, you look at what they do, it's unbelievable. And I always used to, when I was in the tire business, many, many years ago, decades ago, I always thought our disadvantage was we were halfway between having the same stuff. I thought that was a disadvantage, because a lot of people went to San Angelo to buy tires, and a lot of people went to Adelaide to buy tires. We had a tremendous business, but we had a lot of people in town. But the more I thought about that, Sam remembers, 'cause he helped us. Uh, he, he, he did a good job, anyway. And now that I look at it, I think that's our biggest disadvantage. Now, Coleman, I'm gonna kinda, I'd like you on Coleman. Uh, our kids gave their mother a free weekend at La Paloma, out in the middle of nowhere, north of Valerio. It's a place to eat. They only, they only have enough room for eighteen people. And when you make a reservation, you're there from six till eight, or whatever time you get there. They don't turn tables, in other words, that's just the way it is. Plus, they have breakfast there. And we got to talking with them, and I wanna tell you something, what Coleman, what's going on with Coleman, they've become very active with Coleman, that couple. And now I have a pizzeria, and it's open fire pizza downtown Coleman, and they coffee... I don't know what you wanna call it, uh, you kind of think of it...
(Inaudible).
Well, it's right next door to the pizzeria, and it is a coffee house, I guess. And they're just booming, their business is booming. They're kinda investors out of Dallas, and they moved to La Paloma, and turned that thing into a moneymaker. Anyway, Robert told me that there's no reason, his goal is to make this whole area, the whole area, including Bounder, uh, destination place. But I'm telling you what's happening, Coleman, they've got a wine tasting. Pretty pretty rare wine tasting that's coming up the end of October. And it's huge, it's already huge. They hired a girl out of Frederickburg to come up and promote it. And spending a tremendous amount of money to promote Coleman. Now, I wanna tell you what happened, Petticoats, we didn't get Petticoats for this next spring. Uh, Petticoats weren't one of the moneymakers, and I'm afraid they were gonna go where the money was. That's what they did in Levelman, and that's why I go to Levelman during the year, 'cause that old man gives the money. Coleman gave them the money. So they won't be coming here this next spring. Uh, Coleman, I guess, maybe recognize the impact they have on you. The difference is, in Coleman, they're gonna have it at the Rodeo Grounds. If y'all know where that is, it's outside of town. And that's what Mary, who is one of Petticoat's ladies, Mary Smith, she likes that, because they don't leave. To me, I like it where we're at, because they go all over town. That's what, that's kinda was my goal when we started that, when we got Petticoats here. The only place they've ever done it two years in a row is here. Uh, this will be the second time they've gone to Levelman, so that will be two years in a row. They've never done that before. So Coleman, I'm telling you, Coleman is really, really changing, because it's some big investors over there. And Robert and them are some of them, in La Paloma. I'll just tell you guys that, just to kinda let you know what's going on in other communities. Uh, what I'm here for is the same thing that I told y'all, it's back in the spring, and I'll be back in the fall, to see if you can help me in the fall advertising. Now, if you will, go over to the Bounder Area Chamber of Commerce, dial, dial line. Now, the airline assets, two thousand and three, we had red references, and we paid us, uh, not we, our customers paid us sales tax. And now that Hotel Motel tax, a certain percentage of that was supposed to go to, uh, promoting Bounder. And also, the folks that you're sharing then, but if you look, criteria one, it states that, in order to get under the law, hotel occupancy tax, to promote tourism, the convention hotel, the convention and hotel entry and Bounder, it's to generate business for Bounder. That's what those funds are supposed to be for. And it's to attract tourists. Uh, skip promotion of arts, 'cause we haven't had any art shows over there, we haven't had, uh, many famous singers either. But historically, uh, and you can use it for restoration, preservation of projects, which I didn't come in here to ask for that, but that's one of the reasons why we bought several buildings in Bounder, because we knew that they were probably gonna get destroyed. And our, our, our goal was to kinda preserve them, and that's what we did at Bounder Wolf. But those funds are to promote tourism. Now, I wanna look, I want you to look at this next page, funding requirements. This is a state requirement, and it's me, this is absolutely ridiculous. But to promote tourism, that's, that's the reason for it, to promote tourism. They have to put, must submit, this is the third page, they must submit, they ought to do financial statements, probably loss statement. When I told Petticoats this, they said, "We're not gonna do that." They didn't do it in Levelman, they didn't do it in Coleman. Uh, and then, also, the maximum amount of funding for the Vans a thousand dollars. Uh, you gotta use the city logo, and there's a lot of, you, I'm not gonna read through all these, but this is a tremendous amount of things to meet, in order to get funding for tourism. You guys, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just stating the facts. That show, starting with Petticoats, has made a major difference in Bounder. And it's made a major difference in tourism, it's made a major difference in Hotel Motel tax, tremendous. And, uh, I'm not gonna go through that, but if you guys will go to the next thing, it says formerly hotel receipt. And you'll look at two thousand and eleven, over the top. The one number three is Executive Inn, that's the Executive Inn. The one down at the bottom, number five, it's Vintage Country House, that's Gail and I. Let's just say it's Gail, all red and I D's, and blue for works and Coleman. And then if you look at the total sales in eleven, and look at the total sales in, in twelve, it's a negative twenty-eight thousand dollars in difference, difference. Now, sometime when you get time home, revert back to this first page that I had. It's very interesting to see what Coleman did, what Brady did, what Frederickburg did, and what Leonard did. But anyway, going back to the core of the report, if you go back to the second page on the core of the report, two thousand thirteen, that's when Petticoats did their first show. And every room that Dan had at Executive Inn, that weekend was full, every room. If you'll also look, look at two thousand and, two thousand and twelve, look at Vintage Country House. We did thirty-four hundred dollars that quarter. In the third, in the second year of two thousand thirteen, we did forty-five hundred, and that's because we were full that weekend. And then if you'll go to two thousand fourteen, uh, which was their show in the spring. Now, you look at the sales, total sales are down, and this is really weird, but I'm gonna tell you what happened. Look at Exec, Executive Inn, Executive Inn is up five thousand, we were up. And, and so, I'll tell you what, why we were up, why, the reason why we were up, was not only the Petticoats, but also because of the oil. We had tremendous amount of land in here, so that's why we were up also. But everything was full that weekend, Petticoats was here. So as far as making a difference, I think the show's made a major difference. Now, uh, we need help on advertising, it's just like we did in the spring, we need help on advertising. I, I haven't made my mind up, I kinda hate to, but I'm going to. I don't want some of the guys that did sponsorships in the spring to feel that doubt, so I'm probably gonna go around to the same guys and say, "Hey, you guys wanna help sponsor?" I might also hit some other different people up. The one that really kinda bothers me is the restaurants. And I want you to look at that, uh, first page on the Hotel Motel second quarter. And I want you to look at what food's done. Uh, food jumped a hundred and one thousand dollars, I know that wasn't that one weekend, but I'm telling you, it made a major difference. The next year, food jumped sixty-five thousand, that weekend made a difference. The food guys, for some unknown reason, they don't wanna sponsor it, and I, I guess because they really don't need to. They're gonna get, they're gonna benefit, and they're gonna reap the benefits of all the people in town, and that's just the way it is.
What year did we have Petticoats?
Thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen?
Mm-hmm, sorry, the thirteen. That's when they first did their first show. I, I, I just think that the food guys just know that they're gonna benefit.
Regardless.
Regardless, especially, you know, really, they're gonna benefit, period, whether they help or not. Dan at Executive Inn's always been very appreciative and very supportive. I'll tell him, and he'll just say, "Duh," that's just what he is. And I say, "Well, Dan, you know what, you may not, you may not get anything out of this, I don't know." And he said, "I'll care to support the community." And he, he's got a very positive attitude. Anyway, again, what I would like to have is, and the, the issue is, that doing it through the chamber is just next to impossible. I, I'm not gonna give them financial statements, I'm not gonna give them all of their financial statements, I'm not gonna give them all of their tax returns, and I know that's the requirement. So, just not good, not gonna participate. But we've got to continue to promote Bounder, that's just the way it is. And I hope someday, Robert told me at La Paloma, he said he's willing to help us out any way he can. And I'm gonna really get with that down, see what we can do with him, 'cause he is on the ball. I don't know who his investors are, but they, they have money. So, anyway, that's my request, any questions? Oh, one other thing, the last time I came to y'all and asked you about this money, when I left here, I was talking to Brian, and, uh... There, I'm going blind, what was the young lady's name that had, that does the cancer?
Yeah.
Elizabeth, that's the question.
Elizabeth, yeah, I'm sorry, Elizabeth. Elizabeth said, "Well, you know what, we contributed to that too." I said, "What?", she said, "That's when we have ours in that same quarter." Well, the difference is, they started there since two thousand and eight. And they've had it every year since two thousand and eight. So what I'm saying there is, thirteen was a different year, and so was fourteen. Uh, even though Elizabeth has been doing it, even though Elizabeth contributed, the difference there to me was Petticoats in that year. So, anyway, any questions?
So you're saying Coleman, the city of Coleman gave money? Or, or did they run the chair? They were handling their E D C.
The what? Economic Development? Mm-hmm, I think it was five thousand.
We don't have four A, four B funds? How do they have, how do they have to, the, the, the board has approved a four A or four B sales tax measure?
Oh, okay.
The, those self...
And I really think, Brian, you were on target when you said that in the spring. We've gotta try to do something to get that directed in that direction. I don't know what you're doing, but it's, to me, it's a pretty easy selling point, because it's an offset. Isn't there an offset to that?
What happens is, is that the state gives you so much in your sales tax. And we are penalized, because Ronald County uses half of our allotment for their property tax reduction. So we only get, you get two percent, they, I think, excuse me, for, for, for sale. We get two percent available to us, one percent standard sales tax, so that's ours. So that one percent, they take half of it and use it for sales tax reduction. We take the other half, or property tax reduction, we use the other half for property tax reduction. We're being penalized, because we're not allowed to do a four A or four B tax, because our county, Ronald County is taking advantage of it. Does that make sense to you? And that's something I would like to see changed, um, but I started bringing that bell cow a little too late in session. But if we didn't have that notation from Ronald County, then we could adopt a four A or four B sales tax, and essentially, we would collect, I don't know, about two hundred fifty thousand a year, that they could use.
How does that work if you're already making a court?
If you what?
You can't, it's a day and a court.
Yeah, how does that work? We could vote to, under the current statute right now, we can vote to repeal our property tax relief measure and adopt a four A, four B, uh, sales tax measure, although we're probably about to expand some of those things as well, and basically just call it cancel, I think it's called three eighteen grant. So from three eighteen, the local chapter, or local government code. But that's about it right now. I think we got a good case that we're being, our taxing capacity is being occupied by another entity, and we're not seeing the benefit of it. I think we make a very, very compelling case in that, on that issue. I think our issue stands just budget, to be honest with you, and that's what we have to look at.
You understand?
Yeah.
If you have your budget, I would appreciate your help, if you don't, you don't. That's, that's all I know what to say.
'Cause I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that you're correct, that that benefits a wide variety of people in town. I mean, I, I know that it does, so the question is just how we get it done.
Yeah, it, it's not like the advertising goes into our pocket, it doesn't. It goes to advertising, and that's promoting all of Bounder, not, it promotes the show, but it helps all of Bounder.
Are you gonna, uh, go on traditional advertising, or do more Facebook this time?
We do a tremendous amount of Facebook, always have.
'Cause that's cheaper per person.
I do a lot less, we do a lot less, uh, traditional. We don't hardly do any traditional. I, I, I didn't find that, I haven't found that, well, I'm gonna state, I'm gonna say it, my experience with traditional, and that's decades of experience, it, it doesn't pay what it costs.
It's just more expensive per person, I don't, per person you reach.
When you sort of add in the San Diego Fender Times, the probability that someone's seeing it, it's almost zip. The one that paid here was, we put an ad in Bounder Licker front page, it was a little square ad, about, I guess, eighty bucks. But it was yellow, and we got a lot of comment that people saw it. It's gotta be very different.
Yeah.
When, when you do your social advertising, uh, specifically your Facebook, have them contact us, and we can, we'll put that on the city's Facebook page, and we can, we'll, we'll tweet that out. We can, we can promote you socially, easily.
Mm-hmm, well, that's what we, we need, all of that we can get. Uh, one other thing, there's more requests than that. I need help with the dumpsters. I need help with the barriers. You know, I'll call and, and order the dumpsters, now we paid for those last time. If you guys, and I didn't mind paying for them, but if we can't get any help from you guys, I'd like, and we're appreciative if you had the dumpsters free. We'll need the barriers, we'll put the barriers up. She's got about, right now, we've got about eighty vendors. And we'll have, that's the one we had last time, and we'll have that street halfway mark, we'll have it blocked off like we've had in the past. You know, we'll be vendors out in the street, is the way that's gonna be.
We can get barricades, I want to do, I want to do.
Well, I'll get them.
Yeah.
I mean, all I need is the bar, and the trash, and I forgot what else, what, oh, well, we'll, we'll get that.
Yeah.
I'll get that, I'll get with you on that, man.
Okay.
So, uh, anyway, there you go, Stephen, give your free passes?
Yeah, I keep forgetting mine.
One of your, one of your...
I just tell you, Dad, I got a free pass, I'm gonna clean in.
Yeah. I'm talking to him. I will, uh, I will, whether you fund it or not, you get a free pass, and that's not the problem. That's six bucks is what there is.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, thank you all for your time, we'll see you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Stay answered.
You're welcome.
Shutting up for the game. Anybody have any other comments or questions about this?
No, he didn't, didn't say what his budget was, or what he said.
That's what we want, that's what we want. Because that's what Coleman gave, so.
Coleman gave that.
And, to be honest with you, there's, there's some, you're limited in what you can do in four A and four B, you're, you're very limited. He's absolutely right on the Hotel Motel tax. The Hotel Motel tax has those restrictions on it, because they're trying to streamline what projects you can fund with that, and what projects you can't fund with that, without specifically delineating something like this. I think he's made a great attempt, it's just hard to quantify his data and make it match up with, it's, it's hard to sit there and say Petticoats is the reason for X amount. The chamber's absolutely correct, though, that, that he has to provide that documentation to get the hotel funds.
Well, I know it's anecdotal, but the people I talked to said that traffic was up significantly, from any has.
I had, I had no doubt.
Yeah, effort last year.
And I really look at it in the, in the larger perspective as, not just that, but in, in all the events that come into town that we need to try to help and support, because they do benefit us in return. I think we do, I think we provide a lot of logistical support. Right. I mean, we can do a lot of things from that na, of that nature, right?
Well, but I put my bean camera head on, and said, "There's a lot of things that go on in this town that don't benefit us at all."
Yes.
And there's money spent on it.
Yes.
So, if we were really managing this thing,
You are.
we would say, "If we're not doing this anymore, we're gonna do more bits."
Yeah.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
We're gonna do it one bit of our own way.
Right.
Yeah. I agree with you. I agree.
I mean, but I don't have all the data on that, I couldn't make that call off the top of my head. If, if money scares, you know, that's, seems to me, more of a problem.
Where do we get the bank for the budget?
That's the issue.
And, and, you know, it's, it's five thousand dollars, it's, it's, in the basic of things, it's not, I mean, it's a five million dollar budget, so it's, what, one tenth of one percent in the total budget? Um, but it's not... There's a couple issues that I have with it. First of all, we don't have a funding system for that, other than just putting it in the budget. Secondly, I'm afraid of the Pandora's Box if we don't put some guidelines to that. Because then it's, um, I wanna have a huge garage sale, and I wanna encourage you to advertise for me, I'm just about the sharpest. I, I'm not, I'm just saying, you go, you open Pandora's Box if you don't put any qualifiers on, how do you get the money?
I just hate that we're missing out, you know? I mean, if, if, in fact, what you're saying is true, Coleman is doing this, uh, you know, if... three or four years from now, if we look at these sales tax receipts, and you can obviously see that here, we go, we're all gonna go, you know, I don't know if it's the city's job to advertise.
And see, that's where your four A or your four B, the way that tax is set up is, let's just assume it's not. I wanna be clear about that, let's just assume it's only going to remember about to do a half cent sales tax for, to have said sales tax for four A, four B. Our September receipts, I wanna get the sales tax, I don't think I'll report later, but our sales tax receipts for September was fifty one thousand. So probably roughly half of that, roughly twenty five, twenty six thousand a month out of that would, in addition to that, excuse me, would go into, um, things like, we could advertise for stuff like St. Andrew. This, this council would appoint a board of five to seven with a chairman, and they would expend those funds. And so you can use those funds to recruit business, you can use those funds, I mean, four B, you could almost do just about anything you want with it. They have really taken off, in fact, they've lax the rules so much, they're about to just go away with all the rules. And now the council would have extreme oversight, and would be ultimately responsible for those funds. But I think, to take my point, you get two hundred fifty thousand a year, what can you do with that? You can do what Stan's asking for, you can do downtown renovations if you so choose. You can, you can do street repair on that, to, as long as you helpfully, you know, you can undertake labor or make a point that it benefits business. You can recruit, you can actively go out and recruit businesses, industries to come. And so, um, you can't build a sports complex with it, that's the only thing that stopped you from doing, really. You can't go build Phillip Park softball, hockey, swimming pool, indoor gymnastics arena.
I don't think you want to do that.
But, and it does feel, it would be, it would be, and I guarantee you, our sales taxes, our sales tax is just as healthy, if not more so, than what Coleman's is. But what Ronald County chose to do in the late eighties, early nineties, was to take part of our allotment and use it to, to keep their property tax rate low. And then we followed suit a few years later, late nineties, I guess, maybe it was up? In the late nineties, we adopted the same thing to keep our property tax rate low. So we're artificially keeping the rate low, but, but that, that comes at a price, and it's projects like St. Andrew's.
I know it brings a lot of people, I mean, and not just for him, but you don't want to get a huge organ town, so.
I'm just wondering, if, if he wasn't gonna advertise, I mean, I kinda got the feeling he wasn't gonna do the postcards and the stuff that he did fall, or in the spring season.
You can, you can spend five thousand dollars on Facebook pretty quick. Can they advertise on Facebook? We got, I mean, the, the way that's set up is you just.
Promote it and.
Promote it, you know, both disciplines, so you can choose ones, you're gonna promote, say you wanna do fifteen hundred dollars worth there. Another fifteen hundred dollars worth for another one. But, I, I'm just, I don't even know if this is a city issue, but, but from a bounder perspective, I, I definitely think that the more proactive we are in such stuff like this, the more we're gonna pay it in the wallet, as opposed to.
I agree, I agree completely.
I just don't, you know, I don't know if the city is though. Is the right one to write those checks.
That's why we created the four A's and the four B's.
Then they can be bad guys.
Let's move along, please. All right, this is a take action on a request to purchase property located at one hundred North.
So what do we decide on number five? We gotta do something.
We either deny the tech request, accept the request, or pay the one request.
Well, we start a new budget in October, but you hate to start doing anything, I mean. And I see you want, you start opening it up, then they're like, I mean, here, we want something else.
What would give him a five? Twenty five hundred?
But he was wanting a whole lot more money.
Well, that's true.
His budget was.
Way much more, because he had done so much more advertising, but they, they figured out now that it's not gonna be a big of a force per cabinet.
We've only got three weeks, right?
Uh, he's already spending it right now.
He, he's already spent it. He's already spent it.
And he was supposed to be here two weeks ago for the last meeting, but didn't make it, we had to table it.
If we put this on our next, uh, agenda.
Too late, it'd be the third. Well, yeah.
Well, but it's kind of just bringing something back. I'm not, I'm not saying the whole file, I'm not.
No, I'm not saying you're saying that, but I'm asking you, why are you gonna wait two weeks?
Well, I don't know, I guess, we start a new budget.
Oh, I guess. Is that gonna affect this one, this one?
It's an arbitrary line.
So I was gonna say, I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot of difference between then and now.
The budget first, who you? October first, men out, worry about yourself.
Yeah, what are you doing?
Well, I'd like to see us do something, but I'm not saying the whole thing, but.
I don't think we should do that right now.
I'm letting the bean counter do this.
Oh, no, I'm doing it. Jolene, what are you thinking over there?
I agree, we have, you know, because it does bring commerce into the town. It brings people in. So the problem is, is we amend this budget, and how do we pay the twenty five and what we say we spent it on?
Oh, so we're spending it on, staying. We don't have a line out in the budget that says.
I know.
We have, we have some advertising money in there, but that's managed for city, not for.
Not for private.
No, that's fine.
So it's really hard to do because we don't have a specific.
You don't have a specific line out for community advertising events.
I shouldn't have been for that auditor to get on the other.
I can take one. I've got nine known problems and the auditor's not one of them.
Even if we wait till the next meeting, it, it would be a reimbursement to him on his advertising.
It's gonna be a reimbursement, no matter what.
Yes, because he's, like he said, he's done spent plenty of money up to this point.
So is it a decision to table it down and wait till the next meeting, or do we want to make a decision now?
Let's wait till next meeting.
Table?
Table it from now.
Okay, motion to table?
Make a motion to table.
Second?
Second.
Um, papers say aye. Aye. Is that a aye, aye, or nay? Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, Stephen. All right, this is a take action on a request to purchase property located at one hundred North Ninth Street, Lot sixteen and seventeen, block nine, original edition.
What the heck is that?
Right next door to the private edition.
We have more, more water showers or more?
Right.
Oh.
Yo, God, or bumper building, right?
Corner bumper work, okay. Corner bumper work.
The entire, well, it's half that block, I guess, is on the alley.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's those two lots, you know, it, it busts the, the car section.
Right. And the alley. Alley, alley.
And then we won't have us for that building?
Believe it was ten thousand.
Ten thousand. And what are we gonna do with it?
Um, did we even go look at it? I have not been inside of it, no. Did you go look at it?
I have not, I have, I have been inside, uh, I heard a couple of people say it's in pretty rough shape, I don't know.
Didn't you look at it?
Let's table.
Yeah.
I have a motion to table.
Well, before you go, I just wanted, because I don't know what we're gonna use it for.
I know, that's what I said.
Yeah, once you have money, you don't even know what you're gonna do with it.
I was making your company, you remember that over there, I wanna hear your company.
So there's nothing the fire department can use it for, 'cause it's in bad shape, is what you said, we'd have to spend all this money to fix up the place, to get it back in?
Well, yeah, I, I have a bad, but, you know, I've, I've heard a couple of people say it's in pretty rough shape.
Yeah, you meant to use it for a while?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we do not purchase the property located at one hundred North Ninth Street, Lot sixteen and seventeen, block nine, of the original edition.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say.
I make a motion, we do not.
Pretty great, must I get it? All papers say aye. Aye. Wait, go from my table to us.
Right.
We have money sitting around?
Yeah.
We can do that deal, go back. All right, consent approval of building permit, I think, the permits.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, for, we're gonna buy it, we want to, do a add-on. Tier name by thirty, two by eight foot. And, uh, Corrigan, check this, and everything should be fine.
That's an add-on to a house?
Yes.
Eight foot seven? That's not very tall.
Scrimble?
No. I make a motion, we approve the building permit for the floors.
Second?
Okay.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
And you both say aye. So there it is. All right, get the C administrators, five, you can report, please.
Okay, um, first things first, everybody has a picture of the Lions Plaza. Uh, for reference, this is located between M Office and, uh, Subville, Mystics, whatever, they'll call it today, Main Street. Uh, it's been called three things since I've been here, so. Um, this is a rendering of what that will look like. They have raised, I think, about eighty to maybe ninety percent of the funds to like get this project completed. Our responsibility is going to be maintaining this.
So at the back, what did, what are they putting in at the back?
Yeah, leaving the room.
Leaving it open?
Yeah. Yeah, they're providing that.
They're wondering, back, we're putting in the same kind of metal in the front.
Okay.
We're taking the top off the, the front, and the metal will be up, up, as you can tell. And a big car shot, everything all the way back to the back, put four, maybe about four, uh, tables in the center, and put double mat, uh, granite, um, in the center. And the table will probably have two reds and two blacks. We have one seat for. And the wall, we're not sure about yet. Well, there would be a wall on the right, uh, Eric did the wall on the left, and, uh, all they could do without, uh, we didn't know what was underneath. And the wall on the right needs a little touch-up, it would probably be, uh, painted, uh, some kind of earth tone color. To fit in with the rock and everything else. The front sign stood right there, will say the, uh, Lions Clubs, the Bounder Lions Clubs Plaza. Of course, the front, the sign was done by my grandson Angelo, the middle sign is painted black, and it had both Lions Clubs, uh, mentioned. Uh, on the front, uh, it's already done, and sitting out with red and white paint. The guy may start working in February. May knock off to the city, and we're paid for the day over two, so.
Can we get that area behind this, if it comes out in it, you know, because this is looking nice? That area behind it, where that gazebo is? Can we not get that looking a little better?
In terms of maintenance or?
In terms of maintenance?
Yes.
Fixing the gazebo and painting the gazebo and?
Yes, we, and we, and we need to have money in the budget for that.
Your time with the gazebo.
Yes. So this is a, a rendering of what this looks like, um, we're gonna be advised of progress there. Um, the same thing I had is, I was advised by the police department last week that they received money from a, a few grant funds, uh, twenty-two thousand and change from the governor's office, criminal and justice division, is to buy various pieces of equipment. Uh, they were not funded for a new vehicle, but, uh, it's to buy equipment, it's a reimbursement grant. So we'll pay for it, uh, submit the invoices to the state, and they will write us a check. We are, in fact, we have, we weren't even set up in the CJV database until about nine thirty this morning. So I'm, uh, gonna walk through that process with our, uh, grant coordinator in Austin, um, who's with CJV. And so let y'all know about that, um. Good job, I stand, picked up by the PD to get this equipment.
Was that that Jake, right?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Um, the sewer project out, uh, it's been called a couple of three things, one of them was called White Nixon.
Fine Nixon.
The other one was the Watkins Sewer Treatment Plant. Um, it's big, fifteen acres, I think I've taken all the, all out there, but you should see the progress, they got the ripra, I haven't taken it out there yet.
Not yet.
I have to, I'm taking you, I know for sure I'm taking you out there, yes, I have. You lie, you lie. There's, they're putting the ripra down today, uh, still doing that today. Um, we're probably about eighty-five, ninety percent completed.
Yeah, uh, if I remember right, where, fair, we finished by twelve?
Of November.
November, October?
November.
Oh, November.
But, but if, 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 uh, twelve, October works for you, that works for me.
Well, I agree too, right?
I thought our deadline was the thirtieth of October.
Uh, our grant consultant last week confirmed it is November.
I'll be. I'm not gonna be paid every, you know, finish early, you know? I'll take it.
Um, we have passed, what, nineteen compaction tests?
Yes.
Which is phenomenal. Um, we are not lining it, we're using natural clay bedding in there to do that, and so, uh, um, that is looking good. The downside is, is we have funded this project to the tune of, oh, right at a hundred seventy-five, two hundred thousand dollars. As I speak right now, there is about a hundred and seventy, hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of reimbursement sitting on our grant consultant's desk in Dallas, Texas. Um, it's been sitting there for a while. I asked this morning, when are we gonna get some of these reimbursements back? He informed me that, uh, it's a first come, first served process. And so, um, it may not be until November until we get our money back. And this is money for equipment rentals, we've, we've rented various pieces of heavy equipment. Um, it's for labor, um, we get reimbursable labor charges for Steve and Scotty and anybody else who's worked on that project. So, um, we are anxiously waiting to get paid back from the state of Texas. I'm pretty sure the state of Texas is a great business partner, and they would like to make their business partner, I mean, the city of Bounder happy. I'm pretty sure the state of Texas is a great business partner, and they would like to make their business partner at A C D A voucher happy. Um, this is, this grant's from the, uh, Department of Agriculture, and, uh, I'm hopeful to see some movement in the next two weeks. If not, then I'm gonna probably make a few more proposals. The other thing I want to bring to your attention was sales tax, and I'm gonna get into this, Philip, feel free to stop me, because I know you're crunching numbers over there. Um, if you, this goes back to two thousand and eight, and this goes back to what I would have told you the last couple of three meetings. If you look at our sales tax numbers, um, you know, if you start in January of oh eight, by February, you've got a big, you get a big number. You go two more months, you get a big number, okay? And it's a historical pattern, and this will go all the way back to, I think, two thousand, where you see every quarter, some businesses will pay their, their, their sales tax quarterly, um, and that's when you see, uh, these big numbers. I want you to look at twenty fifteen, and specifically look at July, twenty fifteen. Um, our reimbursement was fifty-four thousand, eight, forty-five. In fourteen, their reimbursement was one thirty-seven, six, ninety-one. Now, on its face, it doesn't mean that whole, doesn't mean a whole lot. But, you know, when you look at the next month, um, seventy-eight and seventy-two, pretty much the same, September, fifty-one and fifty-one, go back up to June of fifteen, fifty-one to forty-six. Okay? Every two or three months, you're gonna see a bigger number than anticipated. I specifically have asked why this number is low. Um, but we did have made a phone call to the comptroller's office, they gave us an excuse of, or they're an explanation, I should say, that somebody bought some heavy equipment, and they did buy it this year, and so we didn't get the sales tax off of it. I called Drew Darby's office and specifically asked to talk to somebody at the comptroller's office to explain this to us. Um, I was told somebody would call me within an hour, that was last Tuesday. Um, I sent a text message this morning, can you please have somebody from the comptroller's office call me, so I can discuss this? I get to receive or reply back. Um, this is significant, um, because it's about an eighty, eighty-five thousand dollar hit. When you combine that with the hundred and seventy thousand sitting on somebody's desk at the state offices, you're looking at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in monies that we have on the street.
In twenty-ten, we did three months, but two months were low, and then we got to ninety-seven, then we got ninety-nine.
Yeah.
And then we got forty-one.
Yes.
And then we got a hundred and eighteen.
Yes.
Well, we haven't had a quarter this low.
Well, I like April of twenty thirteen.
Yes, well, we just haven't had a quarter.
When was it that that tax income?
Uh, twenty thirteen, something like that.
No.
You told you, it's about half a year ago.
Was it on that turn?
No.
But I didn't. It probably was. Why did you renew that tax?
Um, but we haven't had a quarter, a third quarter this low, anywhere, at least, oh, eight, I mean, before oh eight. I mean, even oh nine, if the depths of oh nine was we looked at eight hundred and thirty-four thousand all year long.
Year.
We, we had a quarter, our, our third quarter was better, but we haven't had a single quarter this, this long.
Since oh eight. Now, I bet you, if you went back to ninety-nine, which would help our, go back.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, there's something.
But it, it's an anomaly, and it's too random to be.
And let me tell you something, from oh eight to oh nine, that was a significant decline for everybody.
Yes. Yes. And you can see in ten, I mean, it starts in oh eight, and you don't really start recovering until you get to eleven.
Yeah, so it's, it's a question for the comptroller's office, as to what happened there, because I, I can't fathom what would cause a big dip.
Anyway, I wanted you guys to be advised of this. And know that I'm gonna, this is probably, at this point, this may be just as important to my project.
Well, in short term, yeah.
Short term.
If you're out to shore a flat, you're short on sales tax, so.
Yeah, short term, it's, short term is a crunch.
Yeah, certainly a crisis.
Um.
Many is gonna stop putting people on the agenda that want to spend money.
Nope, nope, sorry, I didn't put you, get me.
Oops, did we forget to put you? Um, I don't want anybody to panic, we're fine, that's not the issue, it's, we're just waiting to get paid. And so. Uh, and that, uh, is, that concludes my, uh, report. You might have any questions? Anything at all?
Well, if you need to stall my twenty dollars a month, I'd be pretty good at it, until that's made up. I'd just like to volunteer.
We appreciate your contribution and your confidence that you'll be elected that far. There'll be.
I know. It's only good for us. Two years and a month, it's all good.
Yeah, so they'll be, they'll be rolling you in here on the gurney, and when you vote aye.
Aye. See, I can only pay twenty times, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, that's not even too bad.
All right. Get along. All right, here, request to teach your technical hours from the city council. Anybody have anything else that needs to be learned, too?
Yes. We are gonna need, I, I'm proposing that we look at our building codes, at the definition of mobile homes, all the different types of homes that can be built, and how that works in to our codes. I would just like to, to make sure it's, we're updated, that all the language is updated and everything else.
You're talking about modular mobile?
Yes. I mean, I'm not complaining about anything that's already here, I'm just saying for the future, we need to go in and get a good grasp on that, change the wording in our, in our codes to, to be able to enforce what, whatever, whatever we decide that we'd like to enforce, however we have to do that.
And that might be something we need to be monitoring on a annual basis, just based off the stuff that's changing all the time.
Right.
Do you want that on?
That's a project, really.
Yeah, no, but I.
So I don't know if that needs to be on the agenda, but, but that needs to be a project that's on our radar screen, get that done.
That I can do, I thought, I thought, if you want something by October third, I need it.
No, I need to have it as a project, and then just bring it in.
I mean, I, I won't sleep for a couple of weeks.
I don't think by October third, but we need to, we need to take good heart with it.
Okay.
We'll meet with some folks later this week, that I think can help us out.
Everybody agree?
Yeah. We do need complaints about that.
One version, by.
I bet it's not on.
It's not. The term modular home does not exist in our codes.
All right, Voucher City Council, meaning executive session, is addressed by Texas Governor, Code Section five-five-one dot zero-seven, consultation with city attorney. Here, update the board on alternative wire sources.